Okay, we're going to begin the Iowa City City Council's work session for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. The first topic on the work session agenda is neighborhood stabilization and update on all that, and I think Jeff, you're going to begin, right?
Yeah, I'm going to start us off here. So in June, staff presented an overview of House File 134. We talked about the anticipated impacts of the new law and presented some initial thoughts on how we might react to that. Tonight, we want to give you an update on our refined plans and get your informal approval to finish up with the analysis that we need to do and ultimately prepare the code changes that you all will need to consider. So I've been with the city about six years now. We've gone through three different strategic plans with three different councils, and the one consistent theme through all of those has been a strong focus on neighborhood stabilization and healthy neighborhoods. The goals have been pretty consistent, pretty clear. Ensure our neighborhoods offer a variety of housing types and attract a balance of rental and owner-occupied opportunities that appeal to a diverse demographic and economic cross-section of the community. Much of our efforts over certainly the last several years, but I would venture to guess, going much further back than my time here, have been focused on slowing or reversing the growing imbalance of rental and owner-occupied opportunities in some of our neighborhoods in and around the university area. We've adopted new regulations and invested millions of public dollars in public improvements and housing programs in these neighborhoods. When we talked about House File 134 in June, I told you that the three unrelated regulation that has been on our books for quite some time was probably, in my view, the most critical tool in ensuring that we can stabilize our neighborhoods. With that gone as of January 1st, we have significant challenges ahead to meet your strategic plan goals. Without any action, I think the destabilizing trends that we have seen over the last couple of decades will surely accelerate in some of these neighborhoods. Unfortunately, there's not any, a whole lot of blueprints that we can look to in other communities because the vast majority of communities across the country rely on familial status to regulate occupancy. Matter of fact, when I met with many of the Big Ten cities earlier this summer and posed the question at how they all approach occupancy to a community, they all used familial status to regulate their occupancy in their communities. That said, staff primarily in legal and neighborhood and development services have been working hard to refine some of the initial thoughts that we presented in June. So I'm going to start and give you an overview of one component of that strategy, and then I'm going to turn it over to staff to cover the rest of the planned actions. Again, tonight, we're just looking for some initial reactions and feedback from you and a green light to proceed with the final analysis that's needed to prepare the code revisions. So in your information packet, you received a fairly lengthy memo that had a few maps on it attached to it as well. That's what we're going to review with you tonight. And to start, I'm going to discuss the concept of a cap on rental permits for single-family and duplex units within a defined impact area. The primary objective here is to ensure a healthy balance of rentals and ownership opportunities in our single-family neighborhoods. Without a strong occupancy regulatory tool like we have now, the pressure to convert owner-occupied homes to lucrative rentals will accelerate rapidly. In some neighborhoods, we are already arguably past the tipping point and seeing those destabilizing effects, and we certainly would predict to see those continue without any further action. What we're doing is looking at rental permit density in our neighborhoods and seeing where there is correlation with police calls for service on neighborhood nuisance issues. And with John Yap's help, we're going to step through a couple of the maps that were in your memo just to give you a very, very high-level kind of glimpse into the type of data that we're studying on a more micro level at a staff level here. So the first map you see there is just what we call a heat map showing the density of rental permits. And you can see that the darker blue colors is where we have the highest concentration of rental permits, and then out in the lighter yellow colors is where the fewer numbers of rental permits would be located. What we've been doing is taking this information and then correlating that with map number two, which is nuisance and noise complaints that are coming in through our police department. So we've taken the calls for service data from the police department and started to take that same approach. It's a heat map. The darker the color, the heavier concentration of police calls for service, specifically focusing on the nuisance and noise issues that tend to have the greatest destabilizing impacts on the neighborhoods. The third map that we shared with you is simply looking at the percentage of single-family and duplex units that have a rental permit in these geographic areas. These geographic areas are currently used open space districts, so they might not mesh completely with neighborhoods as some might recognize them, but they are established and utilized boundaries that the city has already on the books. So what you see there is, again, just the single-family and duplex. And as we talk tonight, we're going to try to be very clear about when we are talking about single-family and duplex and when we might get into multifamily. The vast majority of the recommendations that we have for you, and certainly what I would say the most impactful recommendations that we have for you, focus on that single-family and duplex housing type. They don't get into the multifamily. So when I talk about a cap on rental permits, again, we're talking about a cap on rental permits for those single-family and duplex properties. So using all of this data, again, and we're looking at it not just at this high level, but on a more micro level too, we're drilling down to determine an appropriate rental cap for single-family and duplex units. And we're not prepared to tell you what that cap or recommend a number to you tonight, but as we indicated in our memo, based on our preliminary review of the police data and the rental permit density data, we think it's likely to fall between 35% and 50%. So when I give you that number, 35% to 50%, you can look up at this map here and see that we have several neighborhoods that are below that number and several that are above that number or that range of numbers. If we were to recommend a cap and ultimately the council were to agree with that and establish a cap, essentially what you would get is a situation in which a particular neighborhood, if it was already over that established cap, we would not issue any new rental permits for single-family or duplex properties. Again, we're not talking about the multifamily properties here. If it was not in the cap, so again, if we were to set that at, I gave you the range of 35% to 50%, if we were to take that low end and say 35% would be the cap, and a neighborhood was, say, at 27%, we would still allow rental permits to be issued in that neighborhood until you reach that 35%. However, the second component, which is mentioned in the memo, is that we are also looking at a spacing requirement within those neighborhoods that could take on more rental permits. We use spacing requirements with a number of other uses in the community. I think probably the one that you're probably most familiar with would be drinking establishments downtown, but it also comes into play when we look at our affordable housing tools, our location model, for example. So it's something that we've certainly used before in city code. So again, the rental cap regulation is aimed at countering the market impact of the occupancy changes. As occupancy goes up, which it will, once HF 134 is officially enacted in January, we will see more market pressure towards rentals and an accelerated destabilizing impact on some of these core neighborhoods. By capping rental permits, we can help ensure that you reach your goal of achieving balance and stability with these neighborhoods. So that's a quick overview of the rental cap concept that we, again, mentioned to you in June and that we've been spending some time refining. My suggestion would be that we allow staff to go through all of the recommendations, and then you can ask questions about any one of them after, but if you would rather focus recommendation by recommendation, we can take questions now on this concept.
I'd say go ahead.
Okay. Does that sound good? All right. So I think Stan Lauberman from our Neighborhood and Development Services Department is going to walk you through the remaining pieces of the memo.
I'll cover the housing code changes. Karen Howard will address the zoning code. So Stan Lauberman, Senior Housing Inspector. Starting with the first housing code change there, it's that no more than 30% of the habitable floor area of a dwelling can be bedrooms. Other habitable space may not be used as a bedroom. We're getting this number from the National Association of Home Builders for what the average home is currently. And what we're looking to do is prevent existing rentals, dining rooms, living rooms, family rooms, being converted to bedrooms to increase occupancy. Along with that, the second one kind of ties into that, is increasing the minimum bedroom size from 70 square feet to 100 square feet. And this is referring, again, to single-family and duplex homes. Again, the desire is to prevent existing rentals from converting existing rooms, maybe even dividing up existing bedrooms to create more bedrooms to increase occupancy. Additionally, that any bedroom over 200 square feet would be counted as two bedrooms. As we're looking at how to regulate some of this, there's going to be parking requirements in place, and it won't be based on a per occupant basis, but it'll be based on a bedroom count. So logically, some of these larger bedrooms will hold two people and should be counted as two bedrooms because of the increased occupancy. Is there any questions on that portion of the changes?
There might be as we go along.
Okay. Interconnected smoke alarms. We feel this is a life safety issue that as bedrooms are added to these single-family duplex units, that this increased code requirement would also provide a measure of safety. Duplex units, one of the issues that we have is duplexes functioning as single families and the larger occupancies is where we tend to see our nuisance complaint. So physically separating those two dwellings, so you can't have the duplex with the door in between and large groups living together in one unit. We feel that the permanent separation would be a better solution to create two separate Deadbolts required on the exterior doors of units. We do have existing single-family and duplex units in this community that don't have deadloads and don't have that measure of safety, and that was a recommendation from the University of Iowa Student Government that they would like to see. Looking at requiring rental permits where there is more than one roomer. So if you owner-occupied the property and had two roomers, we would require you to have a rental permit. Again, this is mainly to address the situations where homes are bought by parents with students, and then they're rented out to larger numbers. This is an opportunity for us to inspect those properties and to verify that conditions are being maintained and that they're safe housing. And lastly, we have the rental permit sanctions under the housing code right now. If you have two complaints within a 12-month period, you're required to come in for a code-compliant settlement agreement. We're looking at extending that time period out to 24 months and then adjusting how we look at some of those complaints. In the housing code right now, there's two sections. There's one, the criminal complaints that are a violation of the housing code, and then there's a nuisance complaints. And while the nuisance complaint component has been in the housing code since the inception, we haven't used that section of the housing code. It would be our intent to combine that to address the nuisances that we're seeing in the neighborhood under this provision, under a 24-month period as opposed to a 12-month period. That's my section of the housing code. So if you have staffing, oh yeah, that's at a later. Under enforcement, we're looking at increasing inspections, looking at increased inspections on multifamilies older than 1996. That's a cutoff for sprinkling of buildings, rooming houses, group homes, public housing units, single-family and duplex properties with four or more bedrooms. There are some exceptions to that. The permits and the fees, depending if they're affordable units or part of an affordable public or nonprofit housing program. We're looking to add staff to handle the additional inspections and the nuisance complaints, two full-time housing inspection staff and a police officer to better address the nuisance violations. And we would be staffed in the evening and the weekends in the housing department, which we have not in the past. Additional housing code. With new software coming online beginning of next year or early next year, we would be requiring that the information disclosure form be submitted at each rental permit. Right now, we ask for it if there's an issue, but we will have the ability to collect that and tag it to the rental property. It'll just ease and increase our ability with enforcement. And then also requiring that designated agent to be available 24/7 to address issues that may arise, looking for, you know, a more professional response than what we may be getting right now. And again, as we're looking at those, we talked about the time period for the nuisance complaints and the rental permit sanctions. We need to look at our enforcement of the nuisance and how that ties into a revocation of a rental permit, so we'll be tightening up those standards and clarifying those two. So there, that's my housing code.
Okay, good, Stan. Thank you. Maybe other people have questions they'd like to ask you, but I certainly would like to ask you one. Sorry, my voice is soft today. I'm a little, I need some clarity about something. So would all of the proposed changes concerning the housing code apply to all rental units in the city or just to the capped neighborhoods and/or to just single-family and duplex structures? I can ask that again if you'd like.
No, I've got you there. So the habitable area, the 30% for the bedrooms, that's to all single-family duplex rentals in the city. The minimum bedroom size is for single-family duplex in the city. 200 is for single-family duplex in the city. Interconnected would be throughout the city for single-family duplex. If you're building a new building, multifamily, that's a requirement already. The separation would be entire city. Deadbolts would be entire city, single-family duplex. No, I'm sorry, I take that back. That's for multifamily also if we have those situations. So that would be all rental property for deadbolts.
Okay, so almost all of them apply only to single-family or duplex units?
Correct.
But throughout the whole city?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to clarify about that. Thanks. I don't know if anybody else wants to ask, Stan?
I have a question. For affordable housing units, will the cap apply to those units as well? So for example, say Housing Fellowship has an opportunity to buy on the north side, would they be subject to then that cap?
Yeah, and we still, just so we know, we still have the zoning code amendments to work through here, the zoning code recommendations, but there has been some questions raised in the last few days. We've had a couple of correspondences filed with the council that raised the question on affordable housing. We have had some preliminary discussions internally, and it's referenced in your memo, but we're certainly aware of the concern. We're just not quite ready to offer firm recommendations on how we handle the affordable units. Clearly, we know that's a top priority of the city council too, and we have to find an appropriate balance in how some of these regulations and proposals interplay with each other. So not quite ready to get into that, but understand it's a concern.
Okay, thanks. Susan, did you want to say something?
No, I just thought we were going through everything with Karen before we start asking questions. That's why I thought you'd ask.
Well, I was kind of at sea. Kind of at sea with regard to that particular point.
I get you.
Okay, good. I guess we can move on.
We'll get you back.
Yeah, that's right. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening. Karen Howard, Neighborhood and Development Services. Zoning code changes, they kind of build on some of the housing code changes and also some of the work that we'll be doing fairly shortly with Form-Based Code. And so we're trying to build on all those things and make sure that we have house-scale buildings in neighborhoods and areas where we should have house-scale buildings. And that also goes to how many, what a reasonable size of household can live within these housing types, the single-family and duplex. So the first one is establish maximum building depth and width standards for new single-family and duplex structures. And also, it would apply to any kind of enlargements for existing. That way, you don't get the block-scale buildings, you don't get adding on to existing single-family to add bedrooms and that sort of thing to make them sort of de facto rooming houses. And then the second one, also to keep a certain amount of rear yard space, and in fact, your memo should have said a certain amount of pervious surface in the rear yard for open space. That's just a very typical thing that you have with a single-family and a duplex. You have some open space that's used by the household that lives in the unit, and so we feel like adding that will ensure that there is continued to be a yard rather than paving over the entire backyard for parking. And then the third thing, of course, will be the parking standards right now are based on the number of unrelated people that live within the household, with the idea that the more unrelated people you have, the more potential for cars that you have. So we'll have to base it on something different. And so probably the most logical thing to do is base it on the number of bedrooms in the house or the duplex. So to sort of balance between open space in the yard and the number of parking spaces that logically can fit on a lot and maintain that single-family character of the neighborhood and for that lot itself to be a house-scale building, to be serving a household-size-type group of people. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at rather than having to use the household Fourthly, we'll need to amend the zoning code to be consistent with some of the changes that Stan went through in the housing code related to the bedroom size. So some of those things will have to be also in the zoning code because they'll be related to parking requirements. And, you know, when somebody comes in for a building permit, we'll need to be able to say, you know, you need to keep your bedrooms a certain size. We're not trying to encourage, you know, rooming houses here. We're trying to keep things a certain. And one of the things that Stan mentioned was it was based on a study, the 30% bedrooms in a household. And that was in that study, it was across house sizes, that 30% kept consistent, and that was convincing to us that that 30% was the right number because regardless of how big the house gets, that 30% tends to stay about the same. So we felt like that was a pretty good number to deal with. And then finally, we'll have to amend, of course, the zoning code to take care of all the familial relationship languages currently in the code. Any questions?
So in addition, we have talked about a number of other things and realize that there's complexity involved with each of these. With several of them, we've talked internally about the need perhaps for some administrative flexibility. So Karen mentioned, for example, that 30% threshold or that 30% figure. I think we're going to need, as we draft the code, to have some reasonable wiggle room for staff, for someone that comes in with a plan that may be a percent or two off of that but clearly meeting the intent. And that can go with a number of these items here. So we realize that it's hard to, when we have thousands of units in the community, to pinpoint exact numbers. So just keep that in your mind as you're discussing through some of this. We may need that administrative flexibility as long as the intent is there.
Okay, do we have questions? Before, I want to thank the staff. You faced a very significant challenge here trying to figure out how to respond to this particular piece of state legislation, and you've come up with a very comprehensive and thorough set of proposals, which we're going to have to sort through and figure out what we want to recommend going back to you. Susan, I know you had something to say.
Well, I was going to ask a question on one, but actually, I'm going to make a suggestion that maybe to make this more efficient and we can keep our thoughts straight, if we start at the beginning with the rental permit limits and maybe work our way down through so we're not jumping from one section to another.
Makes sense to me.
Might make it easier to ask all our questions and...
Well, let's do it. So how about the rental cap and spacing requirements?
I like that. I mean, that's something that, as a council, we started thinking about four or five years ago at least. I remember when Stan and Matt Hayek and I, and I think John Yap maybe, drove around the north side looking at things, and that's where we got one of our most recent, I think, housing code changes. Had to do with some of the maintenance issues and those kinds of things, just to try and make sure that, and it applied to both owners and landlords, were keeping up the outsides of their property, you know, in a way that was not, so it wasn't detrimental to the neighborhood in terms of what was happening with those. So like with so many things, the devil's in the details, but certainly as a starting point, I think that's one thing that we've thought about, I think a lot of us in previous councils, is how do you find some sort of limit over which you really start affecting the livability, you know, the sustainability of a neighborhood because you get too many short-term rentals in the area? So at least on the surface at this moment, I'm supportive of those two. I think we've got, I'll be interested in the details. I mean, the minute you start saying, okay, 150 feet, are you measuring from property line to property line? You know, just all kinds of little details like that.
Yeah, and that's really where we have to get into breaking down these neighborhoods individually as staff and seeing what is the impact of 150 feet versus 75 feet versus some other number.
Right.
Not quite there yet, but that's what we're going through right now.
I'm supportive of it too. I know I've spoken to some on council as well as staff on this. You know, I live in the university impact zone. I've experienced what the issues are. And, you know, and this, of course, as a preface, this is not meant as an attack on the student population, you know? This is really trying to find a place in Iowa City where we can all live affordably and comfortably, and, you know, we're talking about some of the actions the city is taking. We're not really talking tonight about actions the university will be taking. But when I was looking at this issue, you know, I saw that Iowa State and you and I were providing more housing on campus for their students than the University of Iowa by a long shot. So hopefully, without getting into those details, that this will be a joint effort by the university and the city to address the question of housing and affordability. But I do think that with respect to the cap, you know, there are basically two key ways university towns address this issue. One is the occupancy, the other is density. We lost the occupancy control, so this is the alternative. I'm very pleased with how staff and Eleanor have worked on the framework here and how it's tied to, you know, the kinds of quality of life issues that are factored into how you define what that cap is. So one of the questions I'm hoping we will hear from the community on is what should that cap be? that cap be? You know, I haven't heard too much. I'm sure we will start to hear things now that we're having the work session, but...
We're going to try, I mean, we're going to really try to base that recommendation from a staff level on the police data itself. We want that to be a data-driven recommendation to you.
Right. And I really, that data-driven aspect, I think, is what's so key and what I had always been frustrated by with our comprehensive plan. It talked about the imbalance, but didn't define it. Now, I think we have an idea of, a working definition of what that issue, how we do define it.
Yeah, there's a key issue having to do with rational nexus, which is a legal concept. Eleanor, I wonder if you could give us a quick hint about what rational nexus means and how it plays out here?
Well, the standard here is rational basis, whether we have a rational basis to impose the cap and the spacing limits. I think we quite clearly do. And there are communities, there are a number of communities, for example, in Minnesota, that have these types of caps and spacing requirements. And they were challenged, the district court and the court of appeals both upheld the city on those. So, legally, I'm comfortable with the caps and the spacing requirement.
So, I would say I agree again with a lot of the points that John made around supporting this particular recommendation. I do have a couple of kind of recommendations slash suggestions. I think some of it involves feedback. And so, you know, obviously, from the community standpoint and from the newspapers, media, slash, it's in the room, getting that information out and spreading that out to the public, I think is going to be important. But I also kind of wanted to know what feedback that we're giving, not only from a university perspective, because I do think it's important that that doesn't get mixed or missed in all this. And maybe being a little more, and I don't know what we've done, but deliberate with that kind of push to see, you know, this is a, I mean, obviously, we've talked or had conversations about this being a concern, but, you know, these are the changes that we're making because of some of the deficiencies that other areas, as you mentioned, Iowa State, I think you mentioned Iowa State, right? Iowa State have addressed in different ways or have had more on-campus housing to address. And so, can you help us out to a certain extent? One of the other things I thought about is, you know, what's, always look at the kind of the unintended consequences or maybe intended consequences. And so, what are, have we reached out to other municipalities? How does this change affect, you know, the businesses or the rental property owners currently? I mean, obviously, they're paying attention, but also from a market pressure standpoint, some of the other communities as well. The data-driven approach, going to another point, is good, and I really appreciate that approach. But this in particular, because of this being such a big issue, I'd really want us to run that, a racial socioeconomic toolkit analysis. I know that we've done it through some of our departments, through our strategic planning process. But for this particular one, because of some of the data and some of the areas that I was looking at or I saw on the screen and in the packet as well, I just want us to go through that kind of, I think it's a question-based worksheet to make sure that we're, some of the unintended consequences aren't falling back on our communities or underrepresented communities that can be highly problematic. One of the things I think we're going to get into with the housing code recommendations is talking about, again, where we have, I can't stand, I can't remember what you were mentioning, but where we have those issues where that duplex or door, or whatever the case may be, may allow for more people in a particular space, thinking about how that affects different communities. I just want us to make sure that we're paying attention to that as well. So, that would be my major concern, and how we receive feedback on that is going to be really, really important for me.
Have we talked to the Iowa City Rental Association and the home builders? I don't know if we've got any information from them or have they contacted with them?
We did not specifically meet with the home builders. We met with the rental association, a few representatives, right after the June work session and walked them through what we presented to you in June. And then, we gave them a preview, not as detailed as the memo, but a preview of what was going to be on the table tonight in early September, shortly after Labor Day. And I'm sure they're prepared, when the time's right, to offer their feedback.
Thank you.
I guess I just have two questions. For existing permits, for example, if they were to sell the property to a new person, would the person acquiring the property be able to obtain a permit? So, for example, in the north side, you sell a permitted rental, does that grandfather extend to the new purchaser, or would they have to reapply?
Rental permits typically stay with the property.
Okay. So, the existing homeowner would not then lose value by virtue of not having it as a rent, which I would support. Okay. The other question I would, go ahead, sorry.
Assuming it's a valid rental, in-place rental permit, that they haven't let it lapse for 18 months.
The other question I have relates to a nuisance violation that, it's my understanding that if there are excessive number of these, potentially, that can lead to revocation of the permit. Is that true?
Yes.
If they were to have a permit revoked because it's a nuisance property, would they then be subject to the cap, for example? How would that work?
We need to spell that out clearly, but over time, it's my understanding that yes, that they would fall subject to the cap and not be able to rent that property.
Okay, so that'd be very, okay.
And was there a reason going from 12 to 24? What was the basis for that?
A lot of times, we're seeing one or two a year complaints. So, if you've lived in that neighborhood for years, there's a lot of complaints. I mean, if you look at the complaints at rental properties versus complaints at owner-occupied, yeah, it's only one or two a year, but it's one or two every year, you know? So, we just need to get a handle on that. And we're looking at things like, okay, so they're not mowing the grass. Maybe it's not a good situation to have them with the expectation that they're mowing the grass. Maybe you put a property maintenance plan in place where you're providing a mower or you're addressing that more thoroughly.
How is Airbnb affected by this?
That would be separate because Airbnb, as long as they're owner-occupied legally, get a bed and breakfast permit, and it's allowed. So, that's exempt from the cap, from the cap and underneath the distance requirement.
And I think this was covered, but I just wanted to highlight it. If the primary residence is owner-occupied in a district that is over the cap, rental permits will still be allowed on accessory units, correct?
Correct, yep.
I just had a question about those properties that might have an owner, say, on paper, like a parent has bought a home and their student lives there with others. They obviously wouldn't be included in this data because there wouldn't be a rental permit as such.
Not at this time, no. Right. That's correct.
So, it's hard, it would be difficult to capture that kind of information.
That's correct.
So, that brings up a good, or, go ahead. That brings up a good point about enforcement. And so, as I heard you kind of talking through this, and I was really worried about that particular piece. It talks about annual inspection, but what changes are happening? You know, we're adding the nighttime, recommendations are requesting to add the nighttime to nighttime people or to evening people and weekend person, as well as the part-time police officer, which actually would want to, I have a question about that as well. But what changes as far as enforcement?
Well, I think that's, I think it's a big component of that. And if we go back to the, a lot of the debate at the State House the last several years when this has been on the table, when we would go and talk with folks about this in Des Moines or cities in general would, the constant refrain from the lawmakers who are supportive of this is, if you have nuisance issues, deal with them through enforcement. You have enforcement tools. And so, we have to step up our enforcement. They're right. We have enforcement tools. We haven't been as aggressive as we could have been because we thought the occupancy, the three unrelated occupancy control took care of the vast majority or gave us the tools to intervene in cases and take care of the, a good number of the complaints. That's not going to be the case anymore. So, we need additional people, both to prevent the nuisances and address them when they come up, but to ensure that the life safety issues are met. So, what we're recommending here tonight is that we would hire two additional inspectors. We would have weekend coverage. The evening coverage would be more focused on the police officer position.
Okay.
And what, my current thought on the police officer position, because we wouldn't hire a halftime police officer, be a full-time police officer. So, we would have roughly half of the positions, again, still working out the details, funded by rental permits, inspection fees, if you will, and the other half funded by the general fund. So, that's an expense that we'll have to accommodate in the general fund. But that officer would be tasked on particularly Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights on neighborhood nuisances and maybe neighborhood nuisances that come up. So, that would be his or her sole focus during those times. The other parts of her shift or his shift would focus on traditional policing or maybe another community policing type of exercise. And Stan can jump into the enforcement piece.
Right. And the additional staff allows us to do those yearly inspections, allows us to get into those properties that occupancy still may be an issue. We're requiring more paperwork, which we're able to compare against our own records to, you know, verify in the office that, you know, they're meeting our requirements.
Going back to the rental permit limits, and this was, part of this was brought up earlier related to the affordable housing, Rockne, you brought that up in terms of an exception. I'll be interested to see, you know, what staff comes back with on that. Jeff, you mentioned that, you know, you're still kind of working that one out. And the other one is not just the, I don't think, it doesn't come just on the affordable housing, but we have a lot of social service agencies that are, you know, renting by the room to clients. And certainly, you know, some of them have been interested in expanding the number of bedrooms because it allows their clients to pay less rent and they, you know, they have them supervised or whatever, depending on those circumstances. So, I think those are also exceptions that we have to look at carefully. And I say that from the standpoint, I want to make sure that those agencies, as well as the affordable housing community, you know, isn't shut out of areas. At the same time, I think we have to look carefully at the data, you know? And my guess is that as we look at these and you look historically, that hopefully a lot of those social service homes and hopefully a lot of the affordable housing units are not the ones with the police calls. And if that's the case, and if we can document that, then I think that strengthens the case that we could make exceptions for them, at least up to some limit. So, I guess I would encourage staff to kind of look at it from that perspective.
And I think some of those places you're talking about are not classified as single-family duplex units.
Okay. And I've talked with some of the social service agencies, and I know they have at least a number across the city with different agencies. So, I know that's a concern that some of them have mentioned to me, so.
Well, I have two broad areas of concern I want to share with you. But in sharing them, I want to emphasize that I'm very confident the staff has already been thinking about these and in part has already addressed them in the oral presentations. The first has to do with the form-based code work we've been doing in relation to the missing middle concept. I hope that the cap and the spacing and the housing code amendments and so on don't undermine that work. And the second has to do with the general affordability of housing in the city. I know that there's already been some concern expressed to us about implications for affordability. So, I think we need to keep that in mind, and I'm absolutely confident the staff is keeping it in mind. Those are two broad areas of concern I have.
And I'm assuming, too, it would probably put downward pressure, I would think, on the price if there's not as many, if it doesn't have that opportunity cost as a rental value. Has staff made that assessment or not?
You know, when you get into the affordability of housing, there's umpteen variables that play into that. You know, even, you know, probably the most impactful variable in my mind is the supply of housing throughout the entire community, not just focused on the micro level, but the macro, how many new units are coming on. That's probably going to have more impact on the affordability. But certainly, particularly when you get into the cap discussion here, we are intervening with market forces, and there will be ripples through the market. And there'll be different ripples for the rental. If you have a cap and you can't expand the rental market, those rental values will go up. The value of that permit will go up. On the other hand, if you're an owner-occupied person looking for housing and you're not competing with that rental, to your point, Rockne, there should be some downward pressure on the owner-occupied. But again, with so many variables, those things can get washed out quickly by, you know, the other things at play in the market.
And on the other hand, the more new units are added in other parts of the city, but within pretty close distance of the university, that reduces market pressure in the, if you will, the impacted neighborhoods.
Yeah. Clearly, what John was talking about with the university adding on-campus beds would have an impact. At the same time, you look at some of the pretty dense, extremely dense, in many cases, development and riverfront crossings that'll be student-oriented. Absolutely, that has an impact on the rental market, even in traditional single-family districts.
I want to go back, something that Susan said, it reminded me of around the nuisance portion of it. And so, I wanted to talk, I mean, I wanted to do the tool called analysis for, obviously, the entire proposal, but focus on that nuisance piece, just making sure that, you know, and again, I'm not necessarily as clear about how our nuisance process works. But, you know, for example, if I'm right across my house right now and I, you know, continually call, you know, the police department, how that translates from a data standpoint? So, I'm more thinking of, you know, founded nuisance calls compared to unfounded nuisance calls and how that plays into the data that you'll have available for housing calls. Does that make sense? So, if I call, if I'm across from a house, say what?
Are you saying like if they plead to it or it's, because there's some...
I just mean from the standpoint of if I'm calling a whole bunch of times for a particular house, I mean, how that raises the overall neighborhood from a nuisance standpoint. And that's where I saw some of the dots that are red. I'm not saying that they're not legitimate. I'm just saying that that's a cause of concern to look at, that I'm thinking through. And maybe I shouldn't.
I understand what you're saying. I have to get into the data. That may be very difficult for us to discern if a call for service is coming, you know, if a neighborhood has 75 calls for service in a particular year, and I think you're saying if 60 of them are from one person targeting a neighbor across the street, we need to be able to sort that out. I think that's going to be tough for us to do, but we can look at the data and see.
Because that skews it heavily.
Well, and I think also, a lot of, for instance, disorderly house calls may be resolved with the police showing up and talking to the people, and then it calms down. I mean, there's, so I'm not sure how you would fare it out those. I mean, so we can't really just look at a conviction rate on disorderly house calls.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the first response of the police is to give a warning.
Right. I mean, it's overwhelming sometimes and sometimes of the year. I think back to Rockne's comment about the, I'm going to lose my train of thought.
The housing, like fluctuation?
Oh, cost, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. The pricing. I think one thing we have to keep in mind is until the legislature made these changes last spring, there was not even the opportunity for landlords to expand a lot of these houses. From the standpoint, they couldn't make more money renting because they were already at the maximum because of the familial limit. So, in essence, to me, what we're doing is we're preventing that expansion that they couldn't do before anyways. I mean, that's why we did the moratorium, was to say, wait a minute, we need to get a handle on this before we get all kinds of expansions to five, six, seven, eight-bedroom houses or whatever. So, to me, it was that state law that allowed the expansion that was not really available before because of the familial status. So, that part of it, to me, does not, should not decrease the value of the properties for the landlords. Secondly, I would assume that as we go forward with this, one, anybody who's got a rental permit is going to be grandfathered in. As long as they maintain that property, you know, vet their tenants, make sure they don't have a lot of nuisance calls, okay? They're not going to lose their rental permit. So, they still have the opportunity to continue to make money, you know, from that house. You have, say, bad landlords who do not enforce things and maybe ultimately lose their permit. Well, the other landlords in the area are actually going to benefit from that, and potentially that single-family is going to benefit from a house that can no longer be rented and so doesn't have the same value. So, a single-family could buy it. So, you know...
So, two last questions. One, to Susan's point, Eleanor, you're kind of shaking... One, to Susan's point, Eleanor, you're kind of shaking your head, so I'm worried that those assumptions weren't true. Is that, was that correct, though?
No, no, that's, that's right.
My assumptions are correct.
Are correct. Okay, I was just worried, because I was like, wait a minute, I'm agreeing, and so I don't want you to, no. The second thing is, I kind of want to open the floor to UISG a little bit. I know we had talked a number of months ago, and one of the things that Stan highlighted was the, was the deadbolt. There were other recommendations that I do not have in front of me. Were there, was there anything else that needed to be, because I thought we were talking about incorporating within all these changes, some of the questions or comments or things that, or suggestions that you were thinking about? Was there anything else that you remember from that meeting that was important to bring up?
Yeah, so in the summer, we wrote a policy proposal to the council that included everything from wanting deadlock or deadbolts, reinforcement of dial keypad, and then also background checks for property management companies. There were issues, there have been issues in the past of people who should not be having access to students' apartments, working for these companies, and then thus having unsupervised access. That was one of the concerns of ours, and you're right, like, I do not see that in here, so it was kind of a concern that I had. And then, kind of, I guess while I have the microphone, Susan's right, the devil's in the details, but seeing the skeleton structure that I see here, I feel comfortable, especially to the point of, you know, most of these rental permits will be grandfathered in, so I wouldn't expect too drastic of an immediate change. But I would like to make, just make the point that when students are looking for off-campus housing, they're looking for a place to live first and foremost that's cheap and close to campus. I think to them, it's pretty irrelevant whether they're on South Johnson Street or whether they're in the Northside neighborhood. So I think as we, as council moves forward with housing development, they continue the type of, if they want to maintain the residential feel of certain neighborhoods, that's perfectly fine, but also keep the sort of development that's going on, like the Riverfront Crossings district with the rise coming online next year, I think that'll have a pretty substantial impact on the housing market. Susan, in a previous work session, you talked about the South Johnson neighborhood and how that's pretty dominated by student populations, and it's, that's probably not going to change. So kind of like taking advantage of the situations that we have and the city kind of finding a way to promote student housing even more. As Jeff said, the kind of the biggest, the biggest determiner in price is the supply. And so I think the city should take advantage of where students live now and promote more supply there, which will in turn stabilize the other neighborhoods, College Green, Northside. I guess those are the two big ones impacted by students. But kind of remembering that it's a holistic approach and that students, the university is doing their part. Two dorms just came online, they're the largest dorms on campus. Depending on the survey you look at, Iowa has median on-campus beds compared to their peers. So I think it's important that the city kind of also gives their fair share and, but also takes advantage of the situation. I think we can strike a fine balance between owner-occupied, long-term residents, but also student housing, so.
Okay, folks, I think we need to turn our discussion, our focus toward the housing code provisions. Before I do that, though, I think what I hear from the council, it's pretty clear, we support the idea of a cap, we support the idea of spacing standards for areas under the cap. And you're going to come back to us with recommendations with regard to the percentages, or the percentage and the distance.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's discuss the housing code part of this. Anybody have questions you want to raise about this?
I want to apologize, I was adding all mine in there.
We noticed.
I was just going to say, back to Kingsley's point, that does actually raise a question for me, though, is that I do want to make sure that the landlord, and we're all concerned about nuisance, but I want to make sure that there's some procedural due process. And what if it's a totally unfounded complaint, for example? Or, you know, I'm thinking of the equity issues, what if there are people of color, then there's some other potential issues as to why there's been reports? What, how are we, any phone call constitutes a report, and if there's too many of them? Am I understanding that definition correctly, as opposed to some finding where they either plead or they're found administratively responsible? How do we deal with that situation where there's bad faith?
I think we're getting two things mixed up. The data in the map is based on calls for service or complaints. There's a lot of due process involved in any kind of revocation or rental permit sanction. In fact, when Susan was talking, I was thinking, if someone, I mean, they are given many opportunities to deal with the situation, to fix it. We have a code compliance meeting where the tenant and the landlord sit down together with Stan and the PD and talk through what we can do to fix it. And in fact, we've never revoked a permit. Once we've revoked the permit under it, okay. So there's a whole sorts of due process there.
And is it, can we get a map developed on that, or is that in terms of the actual findings where there's been founded nuisance violations as opposed to just calls for service? See what I'm saying?
That there's been hearings for, is that?
Well, there's been findings as opposed to just sort of a call for.
We have the nuisance complaint map, it's also the snow complaint map. I mean, I mean, those are pretty easy to pick out, that they're founded complaints. We have that data, I'll see what we can do for that.
Didn't we just change the way the nuisances are being reported in the police? I thought we did that a couple of years ago, in the fine schedule, two or three years ago?
Calling that.
I don't recall that, Terry.
Civil citation for disorderly house, when they didn't answer the door, we changed that a few years back, that's what you might be thinking of. And that's also a violation of our housing code.
I'd like to rein us back in. I think we're getting too deeply into questions about how to enforce the housing code, et cetera, instead of what the specific recommendations are to us here, and how, whether we want to go along with them. And on that point, I think I need clarity about how the proposed changes in the housing code directly respond to our concerns about residential stability. I believe it's there, but the material I read is not fully clear to me about how it responds.
So the cap is getting at market forces, it's getting at not growing, the imbalance. The housing code is where we're starting to deal with the occupancy itself and the zoning code. That's where we are really getting into replacing that three unrelated, and we're doing so by controlling bedroom sizes and defining parking requirements attached to bedrooms, all those things. That is the true replacement for that three unrelated provision that will no longer be here on January 1st.
Okay, I think when we get something back from the staff, it would be very helpful to have this clearly stated, and I don't know, a preamble to the housing code provisions, so that everybody knows and it's stated explicitly.
They'll be fine, they'll be, all the wherefore clauses in the ordinance, which will do exactly that.
I thought the 30% rule was an interesting one, and I, you know, there are only, no more than 30% of the habitable floor area of a dwelling can be bedrooms. I can recall looking at floor plans on some of the newer apartment buildings downtown, and whether it was a one-bedroom or a three-bedroom, the common area was always the same size. So I think, I think this is a good, a good idea in terms of, as Karen was saying, proportionality does play a role in terms of, you know, the more occupants you have, it certainly seems reasonable to expect there's more common area that would follow, so that there's a proportional aspect. Otherwise, it becomes a rooming house.
Well, I think one way to explain it, too, is that regardless of whether people are related or unrelated, they are not functioning as a household unit if there is no common space, you know? And that's what you're trying to encourage, is people who are functioning as a single household unit.
So two things, and that's, again, I keep bringing up that analysis, because as I was reading through the document, it just had me concerned. I agree with that, and I think that I agree, obviously, with the overall changes, but then that worries me for, you know, for families that can't afford, can't afford a particular unit. I mean, I'm thinking of a family of five, and that, that particular, I mean, I'm thinking about my own personal situation, growing up, you know, using that, that housing space was a little bit more than 30%. I mean, we had five people in our household, and a lot of times, you know, either one of us would be sleeping, you know, maybe outside of the bedroom, so to speak. And so thinking about how that impacts families, I mean, it's just a concern, again, that, you know, as we walk through this process, I want to look at. The other question I had was requiring a designated agent for each rental property to be available 24/7. I mean, how do we, how did you come to that particular point? And then, you know, I think about it in relation to the taxi cab situation and some of the feedback that we got that wasn't, you know, favorable for that. I mean, how did we get to that particular point? I'm not, I'm saying it's a good thing, I'm just saying, how did we get to that?
You know, it's getting back to my comment about enforcement, and that's the directive that we got, is you have to, you have to rely on your enforcement provisions. Well, one of the, one of the things that we often need is landlord intervention. When we have problem tenants, we really have to lean on the landlord or the property manager to help us take care of the situation, so that we don't always have to get into police charges. Again, police charges should be the last resort. Unfortunately, a lot of the, a lot of the nuisances don't come between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday. A lot of the neighborhood nuisances that cause the most problems are at 12:00, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. And there may be times, I'm not saying that this would be a common practice, but there may be times when our police department or a weekend housing inspector needs to call a property management company or a landlord and say, this needs attention right now, this cannot wait, and if you can't help us address it right now, then we're going to have to take some action that, you know, could lead to a revocation of a permit or some other dire consequence that landlord or the property manager won't want.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah, I want to stress, that's not something that we would intend to use with every call for service that we get, but we think it could be another tool, so to speak.
I have a question, going back to that 30%, I'm not necessarily, I think there needs a limitation, I don't know if the 30% is the right number. My question, though, comes, let's say we have an area where we are under, currently under the cap, and so somebody who owns an existing single-family home goes to apply for rental permit, and that house happened to be built in such a manner that the bedrooms cover more than 30% of the habitable space, that just was the design of that particular house, very small living room, whatever. Are we going to deny a permit? And I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I just raised that point.
Yeah, we're going through a lot of the, and staff and Dickers are going through a lot of those what-if scenarios right now, and that's why I made the comment earlier about, I think we're going to need some administrative flexibility and some.
If it's new construction, you know, with the intent of renting, I get that. But if we're talking something that was built back in the 40s or 50s or 60s and just that, whatever, I mean.
Clearly. As Karen mentioned, I think the 30% was an average figure, and so as with any average, you've got some below, some above. We're going to need some flexibility, but we think the intent of the 30% will help us address the occupancy issue.
Okay. And then, I guess my final one on this, the others I'm pretty comfortable with, is I think, and again, this isn't in the, this is the devil in the details also, is how we are going to find and enforce those owner-occupied houses that have more than one roommate, which means they do require a rental permit. And that maybe the neighbors will help with that, but.
Yeah, it's typically when we have nuisance issues and we're trying to intervene and figure out what the solution is, we'll come upon it and we'll see that, oh, you should have a rental permit.
Any other questions about the housing code part? Okay, how about the zoning code part?
Mayor, as you mentioned, I think the important thing here is that, that this meshes well with all the other planning initiatives that we have underway, particularly the form-based code. And Karen's been our point on the form-based code and is our point on the zoning code changes, too. So I know that she is working hard to mesh those two, although the form-based code certainly is not fully developed.
I have a question, well, not really a question, I have a concern about number three, and that's parking requirements based on the number of bedrooms. My concern there, and I understand we're in this mess because we can't use familial status, okay? So how, how do we set parking requirements based on the number of bedrooms when, if you have a family in there with three or four or five kids versus a building with five bedrooms with all adults that each have a car, those needs for parking are very, very different. And yet, we can't base the parking based on who's living in the house, so it, I realize it's a challenge.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have to look at, the way it's regulated right now for a single-family and duplex, it's not based on, it's one per house or one per duplex unit, plus one additional for each unrelated person above two. So there's always one less parking space than there are unrelated people. So I think with the thought of trying to keep it similar to what we have now, and not, you know, require more parking than what's necessary on the one hand, but make sure that there's enough parking, I mean, it's a delicate balance there, right? And how much of the yard is paved? To try to, what, I don't know if we would want to go to one-to-one, one space per bedroom, we'll have to take a look at that. We may want to have it similar to what it is now, which is similar to be one, one less parking space than you have bedrooms in the house. So, you know, that's just something we'd have to take a balanced look at.
The other question related to that, would you, at this point, is staff looking at those requirements being the same citywide, or would it be different as you get in the university impact area where we tend to have that greater density within more unrelated as living together?
I think it would have to be citywide, because our parking is related to the use of the property, and these would be single-family homes, and single-family homes would be, you know, regulated the same across the city as far as otherwise. I'm not sure exactly how we would regulate the parking without, I mean, we know that there's rental properties in some of the outlying neighborhoods that have, you know, students in them and have groups of people in them. So I'm not sure exactly how we would make that distinction, but.
That'll be an interesting one, because you don't have as much demand for the on-street parking when you get further away from campus. You get really close to campus, you have huge demand for the on-street parking because of commuters, and it comes back to our parking.
Comes back to the parking permit, this, you know, it may be that we can now, or could at least look at street parking as serving the need of tenant or resident parking.
Okay, I'll just be interested to see how that comes back, I've got a lot of concerns.
We have similar concerns, and as Karen mentioned, it's a really, it's a really tough balance. But when looking at how to, how to regulate occupancy without familial status, there's not a whole lot of good options out there. The thing I'd point out, though, is certainly the properties that have rental permits now would be grandfathered in in their current state. Now, it would get, this would come into play if they looked to enlarge it, add bedrooms and so to speak, but for the percentages you see on the map up there, you're not going to see changes to those properties.
Thank you.
Okay, with regard to the housing code and zoning code, what I'm hearing is general support for the recommendations, but as somebody said, the devil's in the details, so I know you're going to have to refine the details and bring them back in a more specific form. And then we'll see what happens with that, yeah. We could talk about enforcement and additional housing code changes, but we've already done the enforcement, haven't we?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so, so you're going to come back to us with specific recommendations concerning these various elements. And there's no doubt but that improvement would be possible, and I certainly invite interested members of the public to contribute their own ideas and reactions and suggestions, et cetera, with regard to the specific recommendations as they exist right now, and then as they will be proposed in the future. And then we'll be in a position of adopting ordinances, resolutions, et cetera. And at that point, no doubt, we can anticipate various kinds of legal challenges, so we should be prepared for that. Exactly what they'll be, I don't know. And then we're going to encounter unexpected or unanticipated consequences that we're going to have to deal with. Well, welcome to the world of regulatory government and so on, of regulation, I should say. So any final comments from anybody? Jeff, is there anything you need to tell us?
Well, just something I failed to mention at the beginning. You will not see all of these be effective January 1st. We may not even present some of these to you until after the new year. We've prioritized them at a staff level and are working on what we think are the most critical ones for that January 1st so that we can, so that, you know, the moratorium expires, the occupancy rules change and we're well-prepared on those. But some of these other things will fall into place with July 1st deadlines.
Anybody else want to say anything? All right, hearing nothing more, we can turn to...
Jim, we'll quick, so the moratorium expires January 1st.
Correct.
December 31st.
31st, yeah. Okay, we can turn to our next item, clarification of agenda items. I know some people are here just listening to this particular conversation, so we'll give them time to move out. Okay, any questions for clarification needed with regard to agenda items? I don't hear any, so I'll propose one. As we all know, the Economic Development Committee, Susan, Rockne and me, has unanimously recommended approval of Item 8, the Development Agreement for Heronoma Square. I personally am very strongly inclined to vote in favor of it, but I think we should defer our vote tonight in order to make sure the public has an opportunity to express its views before we vote. And because I strongly believe we need to demonstrate to the public that the council as a whole has rigorously assessed the proposal rather than just rubber stamped it. So with that in mind, I want, I ask you to pose, no, with that in mind, I wonder if you would support this idea of deferring the vote tonight? And I can tell you, one of the motivations I have is a phone call I received from somebody I know and I don't know this person really well, but I know him. And the first question he asked is, "So why, why would you folks be supporting a TIF for a particular project in that prime location?" And I don't want to go into detail about that, but the basic point was, he said, "I didn't even know you were going to consider this until tonight, or until today when I saw an article in the newspaper." So I think we need to give people a chance to express their views about the proposal and, and then we could, you know, vote on that. So I don't know. What do you folks think?
What do you think this does to the developer, Jeff? Do you, I mean, do you know where they're at with certain things or...
The only thing I can tell you is that they hope to break ground this fall, that they want to do site work this fall. So the developer will be here tonight, you'd have to ask him, I'm sure it'll be Kevin Digman representing the development team, what the impact of another couple of weeks would be.
I would rather at least consider it tonight, is my vote.
I do too, Rockne. I mean, my, my concern is, and I think this is a challenge in today's world, is we don't get as much press coverage on stuff. I mean, the press doesn't really cover or write about the EDC meetings very much. People aren't necessarily, you know, taking the initiative to look at things, you know, go to the city website and find things. But at the same time, I think, you know, we post those public notices, those minutes are online, the agendas are online. If people have, you know, an interest in what the city is doing and I think everybody understands there's not a lot of press coverage, they kind of have to take it on themselves to, the information's not hard to find if they have an interest in it. And I just feel, I mean, I feel uncomfortable continuing to slow things down because people are relying only on the newspaper.
So I'll say this, one, for any media in the audience, you know, if you could shift school media to more citya, city stuff, I would really appreciate that. So I agree with Susan to that extent. So whatever can happen along those lines, thank you. I would agree, Jim, I mean, I think for me, or I would agree with Susan and Rockne. I think for me, I mean, we have that kind of first... Wait a minute, let me go back to, well, come back to me because I'm going to look at where was my notes again.
I think we should move forward on it. This has been talked about a little bit before this and now that it's here, I don't see a big reason to, to put it off. I mean, we're, I just see it costing more money to the developer eventually. And we all know money, it costs you every, every week you, you put things off. And if they want to get started, I think it's very important that we, we move forward.
Yeah, the EDC is televised and actually of all our sort of offshoots and committees, it's the most publicized. On the other hand, it is sort of human nature, it seems, to often not keep up with things until they're right on top of you. I don't know what Kevin will say tonight, I mean, if we were asking that question to defer it.
I see we leave it on and ask them, that's why I wanted to go back.
I think there are four, I don't know, Pauline, do you want to express a view?
I'm wavering on this because I also thought that, I mean, I myself hadn't had a lot of time to really think about the TIF aspect of it, the project itself I'd given a lot of thought to. But as far as the amount of the TIF, I hadn't had a chance to really think about that or get any input from constituents. So I would lean almost towards with you, Jim, at least one more meeting.
Well, I think I hear, thank you, I think I hear four people who want to move ahead tonight, so that's what we will do. I would like to close though by saying I don't see how anybody could express a view about something they hadn't heard about until the day of the, of the meeting. And I'll bet dollars to donuts that 99% of the people in this city are in that position. So now, most of them aren't going to express a view anyhow about it. But I'm deep in my soul, I am committed to the principles of democracy, so...
And with democracy, there is personal responsibility.
Yeah, okay, well, I've said enough and we know what, how we're going to proceed. Okay, so it'll be on the...
Going back to that point though, I have a question about it. So looking at that affordable housing component, there is an or related to that in fee in lieu of or mixed units within that property. Yeah, is that not, so when we talked about kind of that affordable housing requirement, is that not, is that not an express thing that has to happen either way?
So in the, in the Riverfront Crossings Inclusionary Zoning Code, the developer has the discretion to provide the units onsite or pay a fee in lieu of, that's a developer discretion. That's 10% requirement. When you layer on a TIF, that 10% requirement goes to 15%. And so what we're, what we negotiated with the developer, and this came up in the EDC meeting as well, is that the, the extra 5%, which represents two units, would be onsite. And then the developer would retain that discretion for the 10% of the units that are triggered by the Form Based Code, if you will. So in short, I think the developer would have the same discretion, is, is being afforded the same discretion as, as he would with any other project in the Riverfront Crossings District.
Before we move off this, I would invite you to ask the toughest questions you can think of tonight so that we can demonstrate to the public that the seven of us have rigorously thought about this and have, you know, going to make a decision for good reasons. And I'm sure that's going to happen, but the tougher the questions, the more confident people will be. Okay, moving on, we could turn to the info packet discussion, the September 7th packet.
Just wanted to thank Jeff for the article on the looming decline of the Public Research University, other than I found it very depressing.
Yeah.
Really depressing.
It was sort of another aspect to the struggles the Midwest has that I had not, I had not encountered this particular one, but there it is.
Anything else on that packet?
I think going back to that, all of us should get to know our, our elected officials and once the representatives in Washington and talk to them, continue to talk to them about funding for these research grants and the National Institutes of Health because it's very important and it has, does have a big effect.
I learned today that Senator Joni Ernst is going to be here on Friday at 2:30 at the IMU. I didn't know that until today. All right, and I'm not hearing any other questions about that info packet. Okay, next one, the packet for September the 14th.
IP 6 and 7, the Listening Posts and the Listening Post Summary. It's interesting to see that you guys at Uptown Bills had an estimate of 18 folks. That's a pretty good crowd, that's good, that shows interest.
Well, they came, they came with a specific purpose. I mean, so it was, yeah, it was a large group that came with a specific purpose.
But that's good, that's the intent.
They took advantage, yeah, they took advantage of the Listening Posts, it was good.
And in relation to the proposed sites, I think Oaknoe probably would be a good one for a next one to target the, the older citizens.
We're going to bring up the work session or talking about our committees, bringing up our...
Yeah, can do. So in the late handout is a very short memo I sent you, I don't know, yesterday, which resp, picks up on a question I asked you all at our last meeting, which was, would you be interested in adding a new topic in our regular work session agenda with the new topic basically being reports from council people about what their boards and commissions are doing? You know, ICAD, Chamber of Commerce and...
Paratransit.
Paratransit and so on. I'm thinking that we could do this right after the discussion about info packets and I would really hope that the, the reports would be very brief. I mean, the main thing I'm looking for is, is for us to inform one another about what's going on in those various meetings because right now, we're not doing that, so...
Try to send the minutes.
Well, I know, yeah, I know.
But yeah, that's more reading, but you can do a quick one.
We want to hear from you, Terry. I've got one more meeting in December, you'll hear from me.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. A lot of these committees and stuff don't meet more than quarterly. I mean, some are monthly, so it's not like it's going to be a ton of reports, you know, that we're giving, so...
But I think it would be informative because if we don't bring it, you're not going to read the same reports that we do at the committees.
I mean, JEC meets roughly quarterly and lots of times it's like, there's not going to be a whole lot to report.
To Terry's point though, is there any reason why, could it be written ahead of time? I mean, can we kind of agree to that, like...
No, I just, I just say that Kingsley, when I'm thinking of JEC, I'm not going to waste my time writing anything because most of the time I can probably give you a three or four sentence summary of what we did, you know?
I'm more not thinking for us, I'm thinking about for the community wanting to know about what they're inspired...
Well, I think they'll also flag events as well, that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, Kelly, would you please make sure our next one has that category? Any other questions or whatever? I have two or three, but...
I just thought IP 9, the invite for the Inside Out re-entry doing a parole simulation, very interesting, that is coming up. We'll get to it here.
On the 18th of October?
Yeah, on the 18th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So, I mean, I love it when we get invitations with this kind of forewarning. You know, sometimes by the time people send them in and they make it to our packets and I don't always read my packet immediately, it's like the event's gone by. So it's nice when we get these ahead of time. So RSVP by October 9th, so I thought that looked pretty interesting.
The Making Cities Livable Conference, I don't know who posted that, I didn't see.
I did.
You did? I thought the, the theme of that conference, which was Public Places for Community Democratic Dialogue, Health and Equity, kind of precisely expressed, you know, the approach I think our master, our parks' master plan is taking and I certainly have been trying to advocate for. And, and then Jim's the one on the mobility to community building with the state DOTs, I would say amen to that. You know, the, probably the most problematic streets in our city are the state-designated streets and highways. I mean, that wasn't precisely what, what the, that article was talking about, but it is interesting to me that, you know, the sensitivity to context is really an issue on our state-designated streets and I really wish we can and hope we can have a conversation with the state DOT on that.
I wanted to bring up IP number 6, which is September 11th memo from Kelly reporting about our Listening Post work and naming other locations that have been mentioned. Given the time of the year, I'd like to suggest that we schedule one at Oaknoe for some time in November. Does that sound okay to you folks?
Sure.
So Kelly, maybe, we need a contact person at Oaknoe, but if you could contact them and see if there's a...
Steve Rowe is the, ROE is the administrator.
See if we can schedule a mutually agreeable date, if they're willing.
Sure they will.
All right, is there anything else? If it's not, I think we're done. And we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting.